Programming on WCS TV, Channel 180 is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents, Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sackman.
All rise. The Central Police Department County Commissioners are now in session. Herschel Wells presiding. Please keep all cell phones off or on vibration posts. Keep all noise removed from the building, please. Please remain standing for our prayer and our word, our word and flag pledge.
We are privileged tonight to have with us Brother Wayne Cantrell. He is the minister at Highway 56 Church of Christ. Wayne, it's all yours.
Shall we pray? Our dear heavenly Father, we come before your presence as humble as we can as humanity. We thank you so much for our great country and for our leaders and for our legislative bodies, and we pray, Lord, that your guiding hand would be over all these who guide us. We pray for your blessings. We honor you. We give you all glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Wayne. Salute our allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please call roll, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Here.
Morris Bond.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Teddy Boyd.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
Wayne Copeland.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Linda Jones.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Carolyn Miller.
Here.
Charles Morgan.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
David Ray.
Here.
Kenny Roberts.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Diane Starkey.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Here.
Melissa Yancy.
Here.
Twenty-three present.
Twenty-three present. Before we get started, the church has sent over, there's a Dodge Durango parked over in the church parking lot. It's got a warrant tag, 333 LMP. We'll give a call just another few minutes to get back. We'll give a call just another few minutes to get back. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt the docket. Motion by Teddy Boyd, Commissioner Boyd, second. By Commissioner Ray. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes unanimous. I'm sure all of you have received your minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
I think motion approved in my minutes.
And dispensary reading them. Motion by Commissioner England, second. Second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes unanimous. We'll move into our elected officials department reports, and first on the list is Finance, and Ms. Hillis, she's out of town tonight, but we have Ms. Melanie Lanier here to give her report.
Okay, you have a copy of our most recent financial statement for all funds for Warren County. Are there any questions?
Motion by Commissioner Carl Bolden to approve. Second by Commissioner Gary Martin. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Agriculture, Ms. Hilda Lidle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the county commission. You have a copy of our report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those. I do want to say this is the extension month of March, so we're celebrating the extension all month long. Come and find out what all we do in our offices.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second. By Commissioner Ruble. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hilda.
Thank you.
Airport, Mr. Richard Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners. Do you have a copy of my report? I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Carl E. Bolden, second. By Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Codes and Environment, Mr. Rich Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Director, members of the county court. Do you have a copy of my report? Is there any questions or comments?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Boyd, second. By Commissioner Carl D. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Codes and Environment, Mr. Rich Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Director, members of the county court. Do you have a copy of my report? Is there any questions or comments?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Boyd, second. By Commissioner Carl D. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Codes and Environment, Mr. Rich Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Director, members of the county court. Do you have a copy of my report? Is there any questions or comments?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Boyd, second. By Commissioner Carl D. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Next, EMA, Mr. Jim Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'll answer them for you.
Motion by Commissioner Boyd, second. By Commissioner Yancy. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Richard. Next, EMA, Mr. Jim Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'll answer them for you.
Motion by Commissioner Boyd, second. By Commissioner Yancy. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. EMS, Mr. Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the court. Do you all have a report? Any questions?
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner England, second. Second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask a question if I may. Mr. Denny, the coming up tonight, there's a resolution for the new billing system?
Mm-hmm.
I think $30,000 or something. My question is, would I be correct in that's going to be like a yearly? Is that going to be $30,000 a yearly?
Yes.
Or is that like you buy a billing system and it's yours and there's no upkeep?
It's a yearly contract. We don't pay anything upfront.
Okay, we're not paying anything upfront? Okay. The story in the paper, I know one of the county commissioners had a problem with us outsourcing or basically buying or purchasing someone else to do some work that we could do ourselves. My question is, are we going to be terminating any employees of Warren County?
Not to my knowledge, not right now, no.
Okay.
Both ladies will still be there, they'll still have tasks to do, so they'll both be keeping their job.
Okay, that's my question. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
On what, Herschel, on what he asked, the only thing that this outsourcing is going to do, they're going to do the coding. They've got six people that does nothing but coding. Coding's pretty complicated and it changes yearly. They daily, Teddy says, but in our committee meeting, the thing is, is the ladies are going to do everything else. We're going to use their program. The program we have is not working efficiently.
No.
We're having problems with it, and we're spending $14,000 a year on it.
Yeah, I think that's about what we come up with.
By the time you do the maintenance and everything. This company will furnish all the computers, they will do the coding, the ladies will still do the other things, but because they're coding it more correctly, we'll be getting more income, and they're only going to get a percentage of what they increase us.
Correct.
Thank you, Carl D. Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Hey, I would like to say, Carl, I appreciate you clarifying that, because I was, like I said, when one county commissioner voted against it, I wondered why, because it sounded like a really good deal. And I appreciate you explaining that for me and the other people.
Anybody else want to speak? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
Industrial Development Board, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I think you have my report in front of you, and if there are any questions that I might answer, I'll be sure.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second. By Commissioner Ray. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move right on into our committee reports, and first on the list is Budget and Finance, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, all I have is, I'd love to remind all the chairman, it's time for you to go to having meetings on our budgets and beginning to get them ready for budget finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Commissioner Carl E. Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All thing I'd like to say is, we got the bids back on the courthouse work up there that the county is going to do, and on this building too, the painting on this building. They come in at a real good price, so that should be starting in about 30 to 45 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Economic and agriculture, Ron Lee's not here. Who's on? Wayne?
Nothing reported, I'm aware of.
Thank you, Commissioner. Education, Ms. Starkey.
Education Committee has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Financial management, Mrs. Lanier.
Yes, the proposed budgetary calendar is included in your packet today, and we needed this included to spread upon the minutes for the court meeting, as Mr. Bell said. Currently, right now, we're just waiting for budget proposals to come in from different budgetary offices.
Thank you. Health and welfare, Mr. Martin, Michael Martin.
We have nothing to report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Highway and bridge, Mr. Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the bad weather, we used about 300 tons of salt, but we've got everything restocked right now. In April or May, we haven't picked a date yet, but we're going to be selling quite a bit of surplus equipment, so if anybody, you know, wants to go out and take a look at it, a little lugger on to see if they might be interested in, but just as soon as we get the date, we will post it in the paper, and I will give you a date at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Policy and personnel, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and personnel has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Safety, Commissioner Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Our special committee reports, first on the list is the Audit Committee Chairman, that would be Mr. Wayne Cantrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we met with representatives of the Department of Local Government Audit. They issued a very good audit report to the county. The only thing that was stated was a finding from investigative report that's been corrected some time ago, so it's a very good report, and the committee would like to extend our appreciation to all the departments for such a good report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Wayne. County Correction Partnership Committee, Commissioner Bond.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have nothing to report.
Thank you. Redistricting Commissioner, Michael Martin.
Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. We have no old business. We'll go into our new business, and first item is Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number 3-2016, a resolution to rescind Resolution Number 2, 2016, adopted February the 15th, 2016. The Warren County Commission adopted Resolution Number 2-2016 on February the 15th, 2016. That resolution made the provision for a county match of 3% in conjunction with a community development block grant purpose by Centertown. The project scope included construction of an emergency services building to be used jointly by Centertown Fire Department and Warren County Animal Services. Project cost of this project exceed the amount of funds available to Centertown at this time. It comes through Budget and Finance and Financial Management and passed both those unanimously, and I so move.
I have a motion, second, by Commissioner Bond. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call roll, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Twenty-three yes.
Motion passes 23 to zero. Item two, Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Welfare Committee met on Tuesday, February 23rd, to discuss animal control and the animal control budget. During this meeting, the vote on a motion to change the name of the animal control building resulted in a two-to-two tie. A subsequent motion for the name change to go before the full commission passed four to zero. The resolution was drafted from information submitted by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire and was approved by the county attorney's office. And I'll read the resolution. A resolution to designate the Warren County Animal Control Facility has the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center, whereas the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, adopted Resolution Number 3 on October 17th, 2005, through which the Warren County Animal Control Facility was created, and whereas conditions at the facility have improved in several ways since the inception of this department, and whereas the facility is maintained to the highest standards for cleanliness and general care of animals on site, and whereas the adoption rate for 2015 was 83%, with only 51 animals euthanized out of 856 taken in, and whereas public image and community support is better than ever before, and whereas the mandatory spay neuter policy implemented by Warren County Animal Control regarding animals processed through this facility has now been implemented by the city of McMinnville. And whereas adding adoption to the facility name will more accurately represent the positive effect this department is having in Warren County, now therefore be it resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this the 21st day of March, 2016, in McMinnville, Warren County, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, that the Warren County Animal Control Facility be hereby designated as the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center, and Section 2, that this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption, the welfare of the county requiring it. I so move.
Second. Got a motion, it's a second.
Second.
What was that? Okay, Ms. Miller, second. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin had his.
Oh, do you have your? I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Did we adopt about 856 animals, or did we take 856 animals out of the county? Somebody else can't pick them up.
We adopted probably 25% of that, and the rest went out through rescue. We didn't have to euthanize the animals.
I'm trying to get where you got the 83% adoption rate at there.
I presented that at a meeting, a couple of meetings ago.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Call roll, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
No.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
No.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Twenty-three yes.
Motion passes 23 to zero. Item two, Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Welfare Committee met on Tuesday, February 23rd, to discuss animal control and the animal control budget. During this meeting, the vote on a motion to change the name of the animal control building resulted in a two-to-two tie. A subsequent motion for the name change to go before the full commission passed four to zero. The resolution was drafted from information submitted by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire and was approved by the county attorney's office. And I'll read the resolution. A resolution to designate the Warren County Animal Control Facility has the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center, whereas the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, adopted Resolution Number 3 on October 17th, 2005, through which the Warren County Animal Control Facility was created, and whereas conditions at the facility have improved in several ways since the inception of this department, and whereas the facility is maintained to the highest standards for cleanliness and general care of animals on site, and whereas the adoption rate for 2015 was 83%, with only 51 animals euthanized out of 856 taken in, and whereas public image and community support is better than ever before, and whereas the mandatory spay neuter policy implemented by Warren County Animal Control regarding animals processed through this facility has now been implemented by the city of McMinnville. And whereas adding adoption to the facility name will more accurately represent the positive effect this department is having in Warren County, now therefore be it resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this the 21st day of March, 2016, in McMinnville, Warren County, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, that the Warren County Animal Control Facility be hereby designated as the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center, and Section 2, that this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption, the welfare of the county requiring it. I so move.
Second. Got a motion, it's a second.
Second.
What was that? Okay, Ms. Miller, second. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin had his.
Oh, do you have your? I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Did we adopt about 856 animals, or did we take 856 animals out of the county? Somebody else can't pick them up.
We adopted probably 25% of that, and the rest went out through rescue. We didn't have to euthanize the animals.
I'm trying to get where you got the 83% adoption rate at there.
I presented that at a meeting, a couple of meetings ago.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Call roll, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Twenty-three yes.
Motion passes 23 to zero. Item two, Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Welfare Committee met on Tuesday, February 23rd, to discuss animal control and the animal control budget. During this meeting, the vote on a motion to change the name of the animal control building resulted in a two-to-two tie. A subsequent motion for the name change to go before the full commission passed four to zero. The resolution was drafted from information submitted by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire and was approved by the county attorney's office. And I'll read the resolution. A resolution to designate the Warren County Animal Control Facility has the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center, whereas the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee,
Now therefore, be it resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this the 21st day of March, 2016, in McMinnville, Warren County, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, that the Warren County Animal Control Facility be hereby designated as the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center, and Section 2, that this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption, the welfare of the county requiring it. I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, there's a second.
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 Was that, Ms., okay, Ms. Miller, second. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin had his.
Oh, do you have your, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Do we adopt about 856 of them, or do we take 856 of them out of the county? Somebody else can't pick them up.
We, we adopted probably 25% of that, and the rest went out through rescue. We didn't have to euthanize the animals.
I'm trying to get where you got the 83% adoption rate at there.
I presented that at a meeting a couple of meetings ago.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
No.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
No.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 21 yes, 2 no.
Motion passes 21 yes, 2 no's. Quite. Item 3, Commissioner Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Mr. Chairman, because of past and recent actions, inactions, and statements that have been counterproductive, I motion that we consider Resolution 5-2016 resolution is as follows. A resolution to amend the Order of Procedure and Docket of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Warren County Commission to include a period of public comment, whereas the Warren County Commission of Warren County, Tennessee, meets in regularly scheduled monthly meetings, and whereas Commissioner Michael Shane Wiltshire has recommended the incorporation of a period of time at each of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Warren County Commission for the purpose of public comment by the visitors to the meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, that the Warren County, Tennessee, Commission amends the structure of the Order of Procedure and Docket for the regularly scheduled meetings of Warren County Commission to include a period of time for public comment, and Section 2, that this period of time for public comment shall appear on the docket just after reading of the minutes and just prior to the elected official reports, departmental reports, in every monthly regularly scheduled meeting of the Warren County Commission, and Section 3, that this period of time shall be for the specific purpose of public comment, Section 4, and Section 4, that the section shall be henceforth listed upon the regular docket as public comment, and Section 5, that this resolution shall take effect from and after the date of its passage, the welfare of the county requiring it. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Okay. Got a second, got a motion by Michael Shane Wiltshire, second by Commissioner Miller. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Where's that?
It was over here, me.
Oh, Commissioner Brown.
I want to make a motion to amend his resolution.
Okay.
And with the following changes. Can I go ahead and read them?
Yes.
On paragraph 4, Section 1, I recommend to add the following. And the period of time will be limited to no more than five minutes per visitor. Every visitor will be allowed to address the full commission by first identifying him or herself by stating their first and last name and the address of residence prior to speaking. On paragraph 5, Section 2, to read as, that this period of time for public comment shall appear on the docket just after roll call and just prior to the adoption of docket in every monthly regularly scheduled meeting for the Warren County Commission, and I so move.
Have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
I'd like to make a comment of why I suggested this. First, I, I want to say, for 25 years, I worked as a department head for the City of McMinnville, and all 25 years on our agenda every night was a time for visitors. The, the five minutes was absolutely sufficient. We never had any problems that was not handled by the mayor of the City of McMinnville. In five minutes, you can say a whole lot of information. Organized people that came to speak to this board usually came with a packet of information if they wanted to pass it out. They stated what their reason for speaking was, and most of the time, it had to be referred to a committee, but their voice was heard and it was presented to the media. The second thing about here, about stating that where I located it was because I think it should be up here before, excepting the docket. It would be very rare that a person would come up here and address this commission with a recommended, with a comment that would be addressed that evening, but just in case it was, it could be added to the docket at that time.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
At the first meeting of the year, the ground rules were laid out that only commissioners would only have two minutes to speak.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
What I'm concerned about, and I've got a question before you, you're not going to limit how many people speak. If we have 100 show up, do they all get five minutes?
We can't amend the, we can't.
I would think that you would probably want to say that, go ahead and add that into it, and I can make that amendment, I can adjust that to stating that a maximum of 30 minutes to be allowed.
30 minutes is a long time. It's too long.
For the entire time for visitors to speak, you could go, but 30 minutes.
Love to call for a question on the amendment.
Call for a vote on the amendment, okay. Call or roll, please.
Terry Bell.
No.
Morris Bond.
No.
Carl D. Bolden.
No.
Carl E. Bolden.
No.
Teddy Boyd.
No.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
No.
Linda Jones.
No.
Gary Martin.
No.
Ken Martin.
No.
Michael Martin.
No.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
No.
Gary Prater.
No.
David Ray.
No.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
No.
Tommy Savage.
No.
Diane Starkey.
No. And I want to say that the problem I have is that five-minute time limit. I think if that was lowered, I could vote yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Sorry. Melissa Yancy.
No.
Does anyone want to change their vote? Mr. England, what did you say? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Wait a second.
Nine yes, 14 no's.
The amendment fails as nine yes, 14 no's. Mr. Prater.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to have to come up with some restrictions here, and, you know, my guess is if there's a large organization which the people are representing the, the animal shelter, they should have a designated person to, to speak for them, and then maybe I could see the five minutes, but as far as letting each individual have five minutes, I, I can't, I can't see that, but we do need to make some kind of an adjustment to this tonight before we leave here.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd love to offer an amendment to try to solve both of these issues. I'm not against anybody talking, but we have to have some rules and procedures, and being this didn't come through, that's the reason we have a committee system, for you to go through our committees and us to study about things that will happen, but the amendment I'd love to offer would be for us to allow two minutes and allow up to 10 minutes total time, but those individuals need to, need to report to our county executive's office and put their name on the docket and the topic that they will be discussing so that everybody in the public and this county court knows what they're going to be talking about when they come here.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yes, that's in form of a motion.
Second by Commissioner Boyd, anybody want to speak to the motion?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the, I agree with Commissioner Bell, but I think that it would be limited to speaking on the issues and not personal attacks.
That's the way it will be.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we will get this with our packet.
Yes.
Okay.
Call for a vote. Call for a vote. Call her over, please. That's on the amendment now.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
No.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 22 yes, 1 no.
Okay, there's how many?
22.
22 yes, 1 no. The amendment passes, so we're back on the main resolution as amended. It'd be a resolution to amend the Order of Procedure and Docket of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Warren County Commission to include a period of 10 minutes with each person to speak having two minutes, and they must have, our docket goes out 10 days before our meeting, and we always meet the third Monday, so we will need, if they want to speak, they need to call our office or call one of you commissioners, and you call the office at least by 13 days before, so we can get it on the docket, and that way, we, we can put on there who's speaking, what they're speaking about, and everybody will know exactly what it is. So, I have a motion and a second on this. Anybody else want to speak on, on the, on the main docket here?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak to it. The only reason I voted no was because often, very often, we amend dockets to add something to our meeting 30 minutes before, and people show up sometimes expecting that, they have no way of commenting that night when we add something 30 minutes before this full county commission meeting, when they supposed to have their name in and what they're going to say 10 days before. That's why I voted no. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak to the main, main motion? Yes, sir.
One, one other thing that the public should know too, is there are other ways of talking to the county commissioners. We've all been elected by our constituents, they can email us, they can call us, they can let us know their point of view, and we can pass it along. Also, each, each one of us is in different committees. That is really the best time to come and address the subjects you want to talk about, and if I'm, if I'm correct, all the chairmans are to let the people talk if that meeting's correct.
Right.
So, they have other avenues to talk to us.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 22 yes. Or is that 23, yeah, 22. 23 yes. Item 4, Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Mr. Chairman, because of past and recent actions, inactions, and statements that have been counterproductive, I motion that we consider Resolution 6-2016 resolution is as follows. A resolution to remove Commissioner Michael Martin from his position as chairman of the Health and Welfare Committee, whereas the Health and Welfare Committee of the Warren County Commission is chaired by Commissioner Michael Martin, and whereas Commissioner Michael Shane Wiltshire has made requests for the removal of Chairman Michael Martin from his position as chairperson of the Health and Welfare Committee. Now therefore, be it resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, that the, that Commissioner Michael Martin is hereby immediately removed from his position as chairman of the Health and Welfare Committee of the Warren County Commission, and Section 2, that Commissioner Michael Martin shall remain a sitting member of the Health and Welfare Committee of the Warren County Commission, and Section 3, that the most senior member of the Health and Welfare Committee shall act as interim chair until such time that the county executive has appointed a replacement chairperson. Section 4, that the county executive shall have 45 days from the passage of this resolution to appoint a new chair of the Health and Welfare Committee of the Warren County Commission, and Section 5, that the county commission shall have 45 days from the time of the county executive's appointment within which to vote to approve the new chair of the Health and Welfare Committee of the Warren County Commission, and Section 6, that this resolution shall take effect from and after the date of its passage, the welfare of the county requiring it. Thank you, sir.
Is that a motion?
That was my first sentence. I motion that we consider Resolution 2-2016.
Second. There's a second. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Item 5, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is the Warren County Schools General Purpose Fund, 141 Budget Amendment Number 1. The attached budget amendment is in the amount of $870,000, which originally approved by the school board to provide funds for the school system portion necessary for completion of the Irving College, Bobby Ray, Warren County High School Wellness Center projects. The amendment, the amendment was passed by the Education Committee, Financial Management, and Budget Finance, and I so move.
Got a motion and a second by Carl E. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call her over, please, Lisa.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy. Anyone want to change their vote? 23 yes.
Motion passed, 23 yes. Item 6, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is Budget Amendment Number AF-FY1516-1.[1545.37]